The Brookings County Commission Meeting, Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. Would please start the meeting and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections?
We do need to add exec session in accordance with SDCL 125 to one for personnel and four for contract negotiations.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item four, invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action items may be scheduled for a future meeting date. I believe we have anybody signed in today, so we move on to number five, consent agenda items. It includes the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and the human services report. Do I have motion approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections? Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwal?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business, approval of the claims. Do I have motion approve?
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwal?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B under six, routine businesses, department head reports. We'll start with Brian from the Highway Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Brian.
First off, I'd like to start off with thanking you guys again for the food that was intended to be served at the Ten County Meeting. The crew really appreciated it on April 2nd. We were moving snow that day, and it was nice for them to recharge with that, and we do appreciate that. So just wanted to mention thank you for that. Secondly, load limits, I know has been a hot topic here. They're going to be removed this morning. When the signs are removed from the roadways, they'll be back to legal load statuses and permits will be issued again for overweight loads. Yesterday, we worked on completing our NeoGov trainings and MSHA trainings, so we were out and about yesterday doing that with the wind blowing. And last week, I was notified Friday afternoon late that the contractor intends to shut down Highway 25 through White at Fifth and Hooker or County Road 25 and Main and Hooker, which would be County Road 25 again tomorrow. Their intentions is to complete that work in those intersections and get those roadways prepared back with gravel surfaces once that work is complete and then open it back up to traffic and pave at a later date. Is there any questions on that? I know it's kind of a late notice. They did have a pre-construction meeting, but I was out of town, but I did have my crew attend that in late March. But that work was brought, or that permit was brought to you guys earlier this year. I would assume with any luck, weather-dependent, that that work should be able to be completed in a couple weeks. But there again, weather-dependent. One of the intentions, I had made sure with the contractor and their consultant was the school is notified because school's still in session, but it sounded like that was taken care of also.
Because the intention of the county is to pave that road this year?
Correct. And once we can get the contractor, get their work completed, we're hoping to get our contractor in there to overlay those sections, and then the entire roadway would be overlaid thereafter.
Any questions from board?
Lastly, here before you let me go, our bridge work that is south of Aurora, or the project I will be referring to as 08F3, visited that site yesterday with the crew, and they have the old structure removed. The subgrade is prepared and the undercut material is installed. They were moving some material around yesterday, and I did talk with the township officials down there. And there are some breakups that we're noticing on their roadways in lieu of this project. Just to let you guys know, the county will be addressing them, and I am communicating with the township on that. That'd be Trenton Township is where that is located, and I did talk to Todd Nelson yesterday about that. And then 08F4, which is on 482nd Avenue, south of Highway 14, they are, they have the old structure removed, and they're working on driving pile yesterday, but with the wind, it shut them down. So I was visited with the contractor, and they're going to be continuing this morning. But that project's also moving along quite nice. But the water levels are going to be a challenge for them if we do get some rain. They're right there. They're pumping a lot of water. There's a lot of water that flows through that stream there, so they're watching that.
There was brought up, the Highway 28 north and 15 up there closed. If you don't notice, and a lot of traffic coming down through Bruce or Story or...
We have, we've received a lot of phone calls as we had our load limits on. Once they shut Highway 28 down, which was last week, we did see some influx of traffic. But I'm assuming now with our load limits removed, we'll be receiving more, especially on the Esteline, Bruce Oil or County Road 7, and then our County Road 6, which is off of Highway 30. I would assume we'll see a lot more traffic there. I guess I don't see any issues at this point. I know the traffic's going to get around as the shortest way possible, and unfortunately, that's our roads.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Cody from the jail, do you have anything?
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you see, I'm not Marty. I get that a lot this morning. He's out at the Sheriff's Conference this week, networking and training with other statewide law enforcement, so that's a good deal to be at. I want to echo Brian. We also got some of that pork loin. We gave that to the staff, and that was very much appreciated. So we appreciate you canceling your meeting so we could benefit. So as far as the jail goes, today we got 47 inmates in custody. Nineteen of them are out of county holds right now. This year, we're averaging about 54 is our average daily population. We've had about 565 intakes this year and roughly the same amount of releases. So the jail stays busy with that, and that's about five to six intakes and additional five to six releases a day. One thing I just wanted to thank you guys for, I never had the chance in the last year and a half since we've increased staffing in the jail and kind of helped out with that. That was a huge help. It's fixed morale. We don't have the staffing issues we used to. Things are just overall really good, and with your guys' support back then, I know some of you weren't here, but that was really appreciated. So other than that, I don't have a whole lot more, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori from Finance?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I gave each of you a sheet showing the wind farm revenues and the breakouts. This is money we receive by May 1st every year, and it gets split into the county townships and the schools. The chart I show you will be divvied out in next month's apportioning, so those townships will get that money next month. Reminder to the public that mobile home and real estate taxes are due at the end of the month. We will have a drop box probably towards the end of the month out in the hallway there. There are also directions on the back of your tax bills as to how you can pay those different options. Budget sheets are getting turned in to me by the end of the month, and that whole process will start for all of us, so be prepared for that. And then with the court-appointed process moving from the clerk of courts to our office, there was confusion among some clients and different discussions. And Dan and I talked, and what his, one of his employees was doing was a smaller image of what Kim was doing in our office for court-appointed attorneys and liens. And so we did move some of that from Dan's office to our office just to make everything more cohesive, have everything in one place. So we have that changed that we did. Dan will still do all applications for care of poor, and he still will approve and deny, so that won't change at all. Otherwise, Kim's been very busy working with the court-appointed attorney and lien process, getting everything organized, trying to find old records so that there's a train. And I brought her up to kind of explain what she's been doing and answer any questions you might have on that process.
Yeah, so as Lori said, we've had some changes to the lien process. I just thought I would go over kind of what was being done and what's being done now. The clerk of courts stopped accepting payments for any court-appointed attorney fees related to criminal or magistrate cases completed after January 1st of this year. They used to collect the court-ordered court-appointed attorney fees from individuals, and then the welfare office would collect the non-court-ordered fees. Any court-appointed attorney fee after January 1st is now the county's responsibility to collect and is in the finance office. Any court-appointed attorney fees prior to 2025, court-ordered, will still be collected by the clerks. The past welfare portion of the court-appointed attorney fees collection process has moved to the finance office as well to allow a less complicated process for the public and those trying to make a payment. Statements for anything leaned after January 1st of this year were sent out in the beginning of April. There were 87 statements, from which we've had five payments in the last week and three or four others that have called to set up a payment plan. Previously, as I said, we would add the liens onto the system, but they were collected in the clerks' and the welfare office, and then we would send the letters to other counties to note liens if that person lived in another county, so that they could also note those liens. Now, we will be, we will continue to add the liens onto the system and receipt in the clerk of courts payments and send those letters to other counties, but we will also meet with people who want to set up a payment plan or make a payment. We'll send out statements to inform people of their balance and transition all the liens that we currently have to the appropriate set out of the old system. All liens were previously entered into one number set, but they need to be distributed appropriately so we can note whether the clerks need to collect something versus the county and can steer people in the right direction immediately. Because as we've found, the more places people have to go to and the more uncertainty of their balance is owed, the less they're going to pay. The finance office is also collecting any payments for care of poor, but the welfare office will continue to approve or deny those applications. We have a customer set with 9,386 individuals. They have to be moved to the appropriate customer set in order to discern which liens are payable to the county versus the clerk of courts office for us to send statements out to recoup those costs. In order to do that, we have to go through each account individually. Once we get through the 2022 to 2025 records that the welfare office provided, because the clerks actually send their old stuff to collections after so long that we can't be sending statements for those dollars, so we have to distribute those elsewhere to know what we can send statements for to collect. Do you guys have any questions about that?
How many are in that system?
9,386 individuals.
That's all?
That's all. I wanted to point out, in my finance report, the very last page every month shows a breakdown of the different liens and the dollar amounts. So just in court-appointed attorneys since 2020, beginning of 2025, there's $90,000.
And we do, we have to break those out because they also have some mental health stuff that we'll have to get off the books and that kind of stuff, because it used to be leaned, and we don't do that. So going through those accounts will be helpful to get all of that stuff cleaned up. But it is hard when somebody comes in currently to have both the clerk's system and our clerk's liens and our liens together, because then you have to call the clerk's office and figure out which balances are owed to where while the customer is wanting to stand there and just make the payment. So this will make the process easier for everybody involved, and then they know exactly where they would owe money.
So of all of those 9,000 that have a balance due, are statements sent out monthly?
Currently, no. My, so we in our office just did the first round of statements for the January going forward, which was the 87 statements. Previously, the welfare office would send statements, I believe, for the non-court-ordered ones as they would receive them from the clerk's office. I'm not sure how consistent those were sent out, but then the clerks handled their side. So I'm not sure how often they send those out, but they, after the initial, usually in talking with the clerk's office, they typically give 90 days to pay, is what the judge orders typically. And then after that 90 days, if it's not paid off and they don't ask for an extension, then it's sent to collections immediately. But it's kind of a process for them as well.
So then after that 90 days, then there's no more, we're not following up and sending statements, because then it's off to a collection agency?
So if it was court-ordered prior to January 1st, that is still going to be the clerk of courts responsibility to collect those dollars and then distribute them to us every month. But anything after January 1st that we are collecting court-ordered or not, we are sending statements currently. We're planning on sending them quarterly. Because it's going to add up quick. I mean, we've had 87 statements in three months, so...
I think once we get everything set up and keep on top of it with letters, I think that'll be a good deal.
Yeah, we've, like I said, had five people make a payment within a week, and then three or four others that are concerned about making sure we know that they're trying to make payments and are wanting to get a payment plan set up.
At what point do they go to collection agency then?
So we do not currently have a process for the collection agency.
From 20, from the beginning of 2025, when we took over, we aren't in anything with a collection agency. Before that, before 2025, clerk of courts is set up with a collection agency.
And are you guys in the process of kind of figuring something out about that or seeing?
I think Dan maybe can answer that. He had contacted, I believe, someone, but they're more state-based and we're...
We weren't allowed to do with that, so... Well, we'll see how, how much teeth our letters can pull money in and take care of these.
Any idea percentage of people that pay that off? Is it 10%? Is it 90%?
You know, the clerks, like I said, send over a statement every month with the distributions so that we can still remove or make those payments on those accounts for them. And there's about 100 payments a month. So with it being, you know, 30, 40 people every month, that's still a good number. It's just the dollar amount sometimes could be just the minimum, but I don't know what the percentage is offhand.
I imagine it's premature to make a guess at how much that $9 million we're going to get back.
Well, and it's hopefully going to decrease with us distributing those funds, because we weren't able to send statements for certain items, because we don't know what the clerks needed to collect versus us, depending on how old it was. So as we distribute those to the appropriate customer set, then hopefully we can recoup those funds by sending out more consistent statements.
At least we're getting a reminder now.
Right.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for what you're doing there.
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Bob from Community Development?
Good morning.
Morning, Bob.
I submitted a staff report to you, and I did go to the American Planning Association Conference. And I guess the biggest take, biggest thing I learned there was some of the solar energy and how it can be permitted. That I didn't realize you could do crops under them, and it's not just laying gravel down anymore. There's different technologies that can be used with solar. So that should be good information to have. I also shared some of that information on the solar with the First Planning District. I went ahead and had a good PowerPoint that I sent up there to Todd Kayes and Luke Mueller. They canceled our April 8th Homeland Security Grant meeting. They say that would be rescheduled at a later time when they know how much funding they're going to get. So in place of that, April 23rd, there will be a Office of Emergency Management Region 6 meeting in Mitchell. April 11th, we responded to a fire up near Bruce. We took some water to them, and we're in the process now. We always keep water on hand at the emergency management office in case dispatch calls and firemen are out there in the heat. We always load the truck up and take water out to them. And so we're in the process right now replenishing our water sources and Hy-Vee's working with us to give us a good discount on the water so we can maintain it. The reason we don't just go to Hy-Vee when there is a fire is we could be called any time 24-hour day, so we keep some on stock. It doesn't expire, so then we rotate the water out. So that's why we do that. Richard, on last Friday, April 11th, he gave two classes, two different sessions on KFO applications to Animal Science AS 389. And let's see what's on the backside. We did have our PPCC pod meeting. It went well in May. Next month, we are going to have ICS Incident Command System Training at the PPCC meeting, Pandemic Planning Coordinating Committee meeting. And April 22nd, starting at 9:00 a.m., we have our CO2 Pipeline Advisory Committee meeting, and that will be in room 300 next door to us. We'll get it published, open to the public, anyone that wants to come and see what we're doing on that. And last but not least, we've got a letter from Office of Emergency Management saying, Dave, since we're getting cut on the FEMA side, the reimbursement side, we don't have to do an exercise this year, but that really doesn't apply, because we've already got two exercises scheduled, one with Valero and another one with the United Living Community. So we're going to keep plugging away on the emergency management side and do the best we can for the community with the funding we do get. Any questions?
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Weed Department?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have just a short report for you. We had a weed board meeting, April 11th, at 1:00 in the afternoon. At our weed board meeting, it was on the agenda, Pete Harper, South Dakota Association of State Trapping, he last year helped me do a gopher trapping program for youth and any landowner, youth to adult, last year. And he contacted me before the meeting and asked if we were wanting to do something like that this year. The board agreed that it would be a good idea to do it again this year and give some other people a chance to learn how to trap gophers. And then maybe, maybe everybody would just get that under their belt and get out and enjoy the weather and learn a new trade. So May 10th, the location is yet to be determined, but at 1:00 p.m. on May 10th, we will have a gopher bounty trap, or excuse me, gopher trapping demonstration. Figure out about two hours. So I just wanted to put that on your list of things. Maybe if you can make it, we'd love to see you all there. My guys started back today. We hired an ATV driver. He's been, he's got his license already under his belt. We're just waiting for his card to show up in the mail. Should be next week, hopefully. We'll be getting vehicles out of the cold storage, putting warm storage, make sure everything's good to go. They've already started them all up. We've had to replace only one battery, so that's a positive this year. Things have been going good. I went out yesterday with the ATV driver, kind of showed him the ropes, showed him kind of what we were looking at when we're poisoning gophers and that kind of thing. Otherwise, it's been great. We have seven townships participating in the spray program this year, so that's a positive there, too. I'm hoping to get more. We did talk about that at our board meeting. Also, I'm going to be sending letters out to each township that's not participating or having the county spray noxious weeds in their township and ask, requesting them to let me know what their program is to take care of their noxious weeds in their township. Also, one last thing, we have, I've been working with Brandon, our GIS guy, on a field map program. We've incorporated gophers, weeds, and where we're spraying. We still will mark it down, but it'll give us the date, time, and all that on the field map program. Later in the summer, or early summer, middle summer, I'll bring that program to you to show you all kind of what we're doing on the, on the program itself.
Any questions for Mr.?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have, after department head reports, there's finance officer report. There were some be it noted items, orders account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, register of deeds, statement of fees collected. Couple minutes or a couple seconds here. We have a scheduled agenda item. Couple minutes or a couple seconds here. We, we have a scheduled agenda item at 9 o'clock, which, uh, is a public hearing in action to approve the transfer of retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Dakota Shores LLC, Amy Vanderweer. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I will now open the public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak to this item, please come forward. Please just state your name and.
Um, I'm, excuse me. I'm not used to public speaking, apparently. Uh, I'm Amy Vanderweer with Dakota Shores. So, um, uh, not really exactly sure what to say, but, um, I mean, just a, just a little bit about us. My husband and I grew up in Brookings and so we're lifelong residents here and are really excited to run the Wagon Wheel. We recently signed a five-year lease with, with Charlie, the owner, and, um, oh, we're just really excited for this new adventure, so.
Okay. Is there any questions? Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Bye.
Oh, thank you guys.
Chase that American dream.
Yeah.
Is there any other proponents that would like to speak? Any other proponents? Any opponents? Is there any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents? Hearing none. I close the public hearing and open it for comments from the board. Hearing no comments or questions. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Item B is a public hearing in action. Approve the transfer of retail on-sale liquor license to Dakota Shores LLC, Amy Vanderweer. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion and a second. I'll now open the public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak? Any proponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that like to speak? I'll now close the public hearing. Any comments from the board?
Just one comment. Um, as Amy stated, this would be transferring the current on-sale liquor license and the current malt beverage license that is currently held by Wagon Wheel. This is just transferring that active license to the new entity. So just as a reminder.
Okay. And it'll take effect immediately then?
Correct. Uh, well, this application would be either approved or denied by the board. And then the application gets sent to the Department of Revenue for final approval. Once they get the final approval, they will send the, the license, um, to our office. I'll make a copy of it and send it immediately to them, so.
Okay. Any further comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, public hearing in action. Approve a new package off-sale liquor license to Dakota Shores LLC, Amy Vanderweer. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I would now open the public hearing. Any, uh, proponents that would like to, uh, speak? Any proponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? Okay, I do now close the public hearing. Any comments from the board? Any comment?
Just one comment from me. Um, so again, this action would be, um, Dakota Shores is applying for the off-sale package license. This is a new license, um, which is why we're doing the public hearing. I believe Brookings County has six off-sale licenses and we have one other entity that has the package. It's the Brookings Country Club. So if this is approved, this would be the second business in the county that would have this type of license. And we would still have some remaining left if another business decided to apply for it.
And the applicants do meet all the criteria for this?
Yes, the applicant met all the criteria for the package. The, the cost for this type of license is $500, which they have submitted payment. All of the money stays in the county. So again, if it's approved or denied by you, either way, it gets sent to the Department of Revenue for final approval or denial.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item D, discussion and possible action on Fountain Cemetery Eagle Scout project request. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
Hello.
Just introduce yourself and.
I'm James Doll and I'm working on, on, uh, the sign for the Fountain Cemetery. And it's taking a little bit longer than we have desired due to third parties. And I would just like to re, get reconfirmed that you guys would pay for, uh, pay for all, all the materials in there. The sign, uh, would be, uh, would be like a two foot by a three foot. And there would be three of them. It would be just normal metal. And I've sent it off to a metalworking, uh, company, but I haven't gotten a price yet. And, uh, the post would be a, uh, would be a four by four inch. And in order to reinstate into the ground, just to make it stand better, I would have to have concrete. And I would pour it into, uh, the hole that we would stick the pole in. And I haven't gotten any prices on anything. I, I'm hoping to do that very soon. In the next week or so.
Okay. What were the locations on the sign? At the cemetery site or?
Uh, it would be next to the road to the, uh, to the cemetery. So the road to, uh, the cemetery and the road, like, to the entrance.
Yeah. Would you be installing them or would, uh?
Uh, yes, I would be installing it.
Okay.
So when you install the sign, you'll do the locates then to, to make sure you're not gonna hit anything, correct?
Yep.
Good.
I guess I would ask if Brian with the highway, if the location, if it would be, uh, approved by you also on the county road there?
Um, I'm not sure if, uh, I guess i- if it's gonna be installed within the right-of-way, we'd need to kind of review what we looked at. We need to look at for what we provide for other cemeteries. It may be a sign that the county, uh, would provide, um, at that location. But outside of that, uh, I guess wouldn't be the county's jurisdiction. But within the Brookings County right-of-way, I know we do indicate, uh, cemetery locations, but I'll have to review what we would have that.
I'm assuming you'd want to sign probably two signs out on the county road, uh, directing people north on that township road?
Uh, I, I feel like one sign would be good, but, uh, two signs could be better.
Okay. I don't know if a two-sided sign there at the corner would work.
Okay. I'll, uh, look into it.
Uh, we are planning on having it two-sided. We were, we're planning on like laser cutting the letters out and having a, another piece of metal dividing the two so that it could be viewed from both sides.
I guess if you would work with Brian, I believe he would have a, he's with the highway department. He would have a good idea of, well, Lyle signs out of, uh, company to help with the sign. Right.
That sounds good.
Did you have other costs or parts of the project?
Uh, not, nothing that comes to mind.
It was basically today was a request for signage then?
Yeah, just signage.
Okay, I guess. Any other comments from the board or?
I would, I would like to note that back, I had the minutes, um, from May 16th of 2023, that there was a motion and a second made a couple of years ago to assist with replacing the gate, grading 477th Avenue from our county road, um, up to the cemetery. And then again, provide the signage at the road and at the cemetery. And that was approved a couple of years ago. But since it had been a couple of years and a couple of new members on the board, we thought it would be good to bring James back in and have him talk about the project again.
And we didn't, it doesn't look like we approved a dollar amount for that that we would help with. Is that correct?
Did you approve a dollar amount?
It doesn't look like it.
No, you did not.
Is, is this prior action amendable or?
That's what I was.
Yes, I think we're here today to discuss any updates to this motion. I don't think you can go back and amend that motion from two years ago, but I think, you know, something additional or, yeah.
Additional clarification or?
Yeah.
I guess I would just, I, I don't know exactly how we want to go about it, but as, we could either set an upper limit at this point or part of the learning experience, you could have you come back with your, with your bids and we can approve and go from there. Is a standard way of handling something like that. Like, we don't want, I don't know that we need a $5,000 sign out there that we just signed up for and said, yeah, but it.
I think it'd probably be good to have James come back with, with some of his quotes and, at that point, and see what we can do.
Makes sense.
Yep.
And if you coordinate with the highway department, not as far as placement, so you know where you're putting it and how the visibility would look in that particular location. You might, you know, it may work better to have two signage or some of the signage that the county is already in our programs may fit for one situation, but not another, or just explore those avenues a little bit more before we go forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Very admirable, James. Good for you. It'd be a good, good project.
Thank you.
So do we want to make a motion to postpone to a later date?
There's already a motion and a second on the floor. The motion was made by Miller, seconded by Vanderwall. There wasn't much detail in what motion you were giving, so I, I don't know if it was, the motion was to just discuss the request or if it was to approve the Fountain Cemetery Eagle Scout project request, which wasn't clearly defined, I guess.
Would, would I, I could, I could make an amendment to that to, uh, to, uh, postpone it until a later date, until we get, uh, um, quotes and, and maybe an idea of what you want to do for signs when you bring it back. I can, I can amend this, this motion to, uh, to wait for quotes and bids and, and then at a later date.
That's second amendment.
Okay, we got a motion to postpone to a later date. We have a second. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
So the roll call will be at the amendment only. So Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Amendment carries.
And actually, just postpone is just its own, to postpone is its own motion. So it's really not an amendment to the main motion. So we're just postponing it to a later date. So.
Okay.
There's no amendment needed. It's just a motion to postpone.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
If you coordinate with our highway department and you guys can get together and you can come back at a later date then.
Thank you.
That'll be a very simple process, James. So again, thank you for taking this project down.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, moving on to regular business. Action to approve Resolution Number 25 dash 22, a resolution approving annexation of territories by the City of Brookings. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved Resolution Number 25 dash 23, a plat of track two and track three, Barnett addition in the northeast quarter of Section 7, Township 110 North, range 49 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
The Planning Commission heard this on April the 1st, passed it unanimously and sent it to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved Resolution Number 25 dash 24, a plat of Novak addition in the northeast quarter of Section 15, Township 111 North, range 49 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
Once again, this one was heard April the 1st by the Planning Commission, approved unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation you approve it.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action approved Resolution Number 25 25, a plat of Nelson addition in the north half of the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 21, Township 112 North, range 47 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
This was heard April the 1st by the Brookings County Planning Commission, approved unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation you approve it.
Okay. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approved Resolution Number 25 dash 26, a plat of lots 1 and 2 of G and D addition in the southeast quarter of Section 21, Township 110 North, range 49 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
This was heard April the 1st by the Pl- Brookings County Planning Commission, passed unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation you approve it.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F, action approved Agreement Number 25 dash 36, an agreement between Brookings County and Timmins Construction, Inc., for the 2025 Brookings County Courthouse Parking Lot and Sidewalk Project. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have motion and a second. Comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is action approved Agreement Number 25 dash. Item G is action approve agreement number 25-37. An agreement between Brookings County and the Road Guys Construction Company, Inc. For the 2025 Brookings County Chip Seal Project. Do I have motion approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve agreement number 25-38. A Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract with Moody County. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion in second. Any comments? Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item I, action approve agreement number 25-39. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Lake Sinai Township. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion in second. Any comments?
This is right next, or coming out of Sinai. You guys know there's both, or there's water on both sides of the road, but this will be underground buried to the west side of Sinai going west and then north.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item J is action to approve agreement number 25-40. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Oslo Township. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second. I have motion in second. Any comments?
Well, this is crossing County Road 14, just a crossing, I believe, to feed an irrigation line.
Okay. No further comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item K, action approve request, or action approve agreement number 25-41. An application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Rick and Kay, Casperson Living Trust and Lake Sinai Township. Do I have motion approve?
So moved. To approve.
Second.
I have motion in second. Any comments?
I had Jeff and Randy go out and review this. Just be it noted that there is a surface drainage there, but this will be underground drainage right in there of the, of the surface drainage under County Road 11, or 12, sorry.
Okay. Any further comments or?
Brian, I thought I noticed in the comments that this line is going to be kept three or four foot away from the culvert. Therefore, if the culvert ever fails, this other line won't get damaged, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the landowner was made well aware that if there is utility or other lines that would be coming in there and it does get damaged, it would be at the landowner's expense to repair.
Okay, no further comments. All in favor saying goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Okay, we're moving on to item number nine, commission department director's report.
I had some numbers there from our veteran service officer for March. Two DAV van rides and two Veterans Transportation Service rides. Just kind of to note that that Veterans Transportation Service has been working very well. That is a free service as well. So we're getting away from the use of, of beta. They're still there, kind of in an emergency situation, but having the DAV van and now this Veterans Transportation Service available has been very helpful. They attended two outreach events in May, our VSO staff did, and then Matt Pillar, our VSO always submits that claims payments made and almost $182,000 in benefits coming back to veterans in March here in Brookings County. So want to keep you aware of that and the work that they're doing there. As you should know, we rescheduled that 10-county meeting. It's for next Wednesday, April 23rd. It'll be at noon, still at the BCOAC. Really, nothing has changed other than the date. But I do need to know who plans to attend, and I know, I think Dave, you can't. It was the one date that worked for all of the other counties though, as I started sending it out, so. Yes, yes, Doug, Sean.
Could be able to.
You will be able to be there, Dave? Okay, perfect. Plan on all five of you there. And then the March general fuss, words, Stacy, general fund surplus. It's a tongue twister. That analysis, I handed that out this morning. That is at 14% for March, a month end, just above the 10-year average of 12%. We just kind of keep an eye on that throughout the year to know, you know, we have to be underneath that 40% at year-end, so we just keep track of that and watch the trends of that. Obviously, we're going to see that percentage go up in April with the first half taxes that are due next month. So it being low right now is really nothing to be too alarmed about through March because we've been spending, spending money paying bills, but the first big chunk of our revenue comes in here, here in April with property taxes. Other than that, some upcoming dates Friday. I think it was noted incorrectly on the agenda, but offices are closed all day for Good Friday this week. Next Tuesday, there is the 2025 Heartland Summit from noon to 1:30 in Mitchell. I think you maybe received an invite from Senator Rounds on that. If you need me to look into that for RSVP reasons, let me know. And then next Wednesday is the 10-county or the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting at noon out at the OAC. And then the 27th is the Aurora Firefighters Pancake Feed, 8 to 12:30 at the Fire Hall in Aurora. That Brookings Economic Summit, I think that's been on the agenda now. If you need, you have to register for that. That is Tuesday, the 29th, 7:30 to noon out at the Dakota Bank Center. And then that same day, that evening, is the Brookings Volunteer Fire Department Annual Feed at 5:30 at the Fire Hall there at Sixth Street and 20th Avenue. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Move on to item number 10, State's Attorney's Office Report. Item number 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On April, Thursday, April 3rd, I attended the Taste of Brookings at the Club 71 with other community members. It was a good event, as always. And then on Tuesday, April 8th, I attended the equalization meeting with all of you here. And that's my report. Thank you.
Commissioner Post.
Yeah, thank you. I also did the equalization on the 8th, and then later that day, we took off and went to the South Dakota county commis-, group of county commissioners in Pier there and had a nice training session. There was a, it's a good opportunity to meet other commissioners and talk to them about their other issues and, and get some expertise from other people in the field. On the 11th, we had our weed meeting and had good discussions there. And on the 14th, just yesterday, we, we set the budget on for the extension board.
Okay. Commissioner Miller.
Alright, well, on the 8th. On the 8th, I also was at the equalization meeting and then, just like Doug and Larry, 9th and 10th, went to Pier to that conference. It was excellent. A lot of really good information there for us newbies there, and it's good, I agree with Doug. It's good to network with the new people and had some great conversations with commissioners from Watertown and time well spent.
Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, on the 2nd, I had a research park meeting going over their strategic plan. Got some good conversations, get some ideas about the next, probably upcoming five years or so. On the 8th, I was able to call in and attend the equalization meeting via phone. And then that, that commission meeting after that, and that is my report.
Okay. On the 2nd, I attended the Conservation District meeting at noon that day. On the 3rd, also attended the Chamber Taste of Brookings event. On the, the next, on the 8th, also did the equalization appeals in the morning. And later in the day, we left for the spring workshop out in Pier. Also echo the other commissioners' comments. It's good to talk to other commissioners and the topics discussed out there were very good topics, so. Last night, I was able to attend actually a wind tower safety meeting. It was a very good meeting and learned a few things there with the safety on the wind towers. With that, that's conclusion report. We do have a couple correspondence received from DNR to Global Dairy and DNR to Subic's Feed Lot. With that, we'll move on to item number 12, is executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law. 1-25-2, parentheses 1 and 4. Do I have motion to enter?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.